All right, welcome everyone. I'll call to order the July 16th Fridley Public School Board's Board Meeting. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we begin with a motion to approve the agenda for the July 16th meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Prueado, seconded by Thornton, to approve the agenda for July 16th. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next up would be our spotlight on recognition. Dr. Hile.
We do not have one for today. Thank you, Mr. Riddle.
It's on the agenda. The spotlight is on everyone. All right, well then we'll move on to our student and staff reports, beginning with a high school presentation by Ms. Hand, Mr. McConville, and Dan Roth also. It's a triple. It's usually only get two. It's a bonus to get three.
Well, good evening, Board Chair Riddle, Board members, and Superintendent Heil. Thank you so much for the opportunity for us to share a look back at Fridley High School for this past school year. All right. We decided that in our look back, we would focus on what we've been focusing on all year, which is "I belong." "I belong" is our focus for our culture, for our building, for our students, for our staff, and for our community. And we're going to focus on four different areas. As you see under Culture, our MTSS, where we'll talk a lot more about "I belong," and our MTSS programming, our CLR, and Tigers United, our activities, "Become Worth Following," and our Avid transition signing day. So, a couple specifics within each of those goals. With that, I do want to go back to what we've been focusing on the last three years and will continue to focus on into our next year is our tapestry. Again, we're really been really focused on taking the next steps in our journey, not necessarily starting something new, but really delving deeper and then seeing how it all connects to each other within the schools, within our strategic plan, and how it all weaves together within our tapestry. So again, we go back to our vision and our mission, as you see up there, to support the success of each and every student in the IB, focusing on standards-based grading, our activities, our climate, and Avid and CLR, which we will focus on tonight. And we thought it would be fitting to start with "I belong," to kind of get into it in more detail. As you know, "I belong," the acronym is up there, too, for "I," for "IB," be the real me, embrace situational appropriateness, learn my responsibilities, own my learning and my mistakes, notice my impact on others, and the G for graduate. And we thought we would start with a little video that we made at the beginning of last year to kick off "I belong" at our school.
Because everyone belongs at Fridley.
Creativity.
Positivity.
All around.
Yeah!
Diversity, because it's okay to be different.
I think Fridley High School is very diverse and it makes me feel like I belong here.
I'd have to say, I really love the community of Fridley. They're all really involving and they all accept everyone.
I love seeing your wonderful faces every day.
Taking out all my friends.
All the activities I get to do with my friends.
Hashtag student council.
Student council!
Music production, because I'm the coolest DJ on the planet.
Eating lunch with friends.
One lunch, one lunch is the best. Look at it.
I like eating lunch with the kids and sharing conversations.
I love our students and one lunch.
One lunch is awesome, because I get to go make up tests or talk to teachers or hang out with friends.
Making the music happen here on the stage at Fridley Auditorium is what I enjoy the most.
Fridley High School allows me to express myself both onstage and off.
Fridley High School allows me to fight both sides of my opinion through gigs.
I love the performing arts in Fridley.
A-A-M, dude!
We've been working hard getting everyone in the yearbook.
We belong!
Preserve your coffee today.
I like Fridley because it's very diverse here and very open with different clubs and activities such as spa. Spa is spreading positivity all around.
The reason why I love Fridley is my economics plus this class right here.
This is Avid!
I love you!
Beautiful voices!
Fans!
I love my awesome and energetic students that make teaching here so fun.
What I love about Fridley is how supporting the staff is and my friends.
Teachers are so understanding, they're very open-minded, and they know who you are as a person and a student.
I feel like it has to be the teachers. I feel like they're always there to help support the students and, you know, they're always there for everybody.
Lo que me gusta más de esta escuela, de este distrito, de Fridley, es la gente, la diversidad, los estudiantes, los profesores, el personal, todo. Me gusta todo. Gracias.
Lee?
Profes, puedo tener café, por favor?
Sí, claro, venga. Es por eso que me encanta la escuela de Fridley, porque nosotros podemos beber café juntos.
Gracias, profes.
This is why I love Fridley. I get to be with all my awesome readers.
At Fridley High School, we love math, because we can work together and solve problems and tell awesome jokes. All right, guys, what did zero say to eight?
What?
Nice belt!
Ahhh!
We like working at Fridley High School. Great food, kids are great, I think it's a great place to learn.
I love Fridley High School, because my whole family attended here.
Family!
We Fridley, baby!
We belong!
Because of football.
Fridley baseball and basketball is going to state this year.
Fridley fucking rules!
Yeah!
Connections through athletics last a lifetime.
I belong here, because I can't find my keys. I can't get home.
Hey, this is Tessa Wickens, this is St. Corinna Luther. Hey, I love coaching these guys, they're a great group of guys.
Fridley football rules!
All right, everybody take out your journals. I love ninth grade.
Last of the white dudes, back of the yellow!
Now, yesterday, we did the lab with this very exciting melting of ice. What I gotta say is, I love science.
Do what?
Do what? Give the system do what?
That's why teaching at Fridley has been so bad.
The class of the 2019.
Almighty, so mean, so fresh, so clean. We're the class of 2019.
Hi Fridley High School, my name is Patty Hand and I'm the head principal. "I belong" starts with B, be the real you. We want you to bring your authentic selves every day. We're here to support you and help you find success.
Hi out there. I'm Dan Roth. I'm the Activities Director. And speaking of belonging, that's like the nature of my job. In activities, we're looking at clubs, we're looking at fine arts, we're looking at sports, and we want you to find a place that brings your passion out and you get after it. So, go Tigers!
Hi Fridley High School, Kelly McConville Assistant Principal. I'm going to talk about the G in graduate. Every year, I have the opportunity to shake graduating seniors' hands. Everything that we're doing at Fridley with "I belong" is geared to helping students be successful, graduate, being successful here and beyond. Go Tigers!
All right.
Good job. Is this going to be on the website?
That's a good question.
Yes. Yes.
So, it's hard to follow that, because that really speaks to kind of what we're about. And it's something we introduced last year, the "I belong" concept, and something we're going to continue. And then some more specifics with our MTSS looking at. We're excited about being part of PBS cohort next year, where we can work with other high schools along their journey and really bounce ideas off of and really start that next step, so we can make it part of our standard work. Oh, sorry. There we go. And just continue that work with "I belong" and really working with our students and getting feedback and reflecting and just making it just a great experience for the students, as evidenced through that video.
All right, focusing on CLR and our next steps with CLR. We started up a student group this year called Tigers United. It was a wonderful group. We really taught our students about culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning, and taught them the communications and the language that we are being taught at the same time. So it was really, really fun to do that. The group formed together, they learned a lot, they challenged each other a lot, they had fun, and they kind of figured out what they want to do and kind of figured out their goals. So we're really excited for next steps with that. We also really focused, we had, I think, five or six more teachers coached this year in the instructional coaching cycle, and then we spent a lot of time with something called the CLR swim team. So what it is, is the teachers get together per their prep time, they'll get together kind of interdisciplinary teams, getting together and practicing different, so they might focus on different movement protocols or different discussion protocols, and then come back together and talk about what worked, what didn't work, and why, and share that. And so we really focused on a lot with our swim team and also on our professional development. Our next steps with CLR is we're going to continue with Tigers United. Our hope is to continue to bring more students on board from all walks of life within our school, educate our students, and then take it to the next level, really focus on their goals and what they want from their culture, because I always talk with the students about, it's not only the staff who helped create the environment for you, you created it as well. And so, what do they want to do? And I know one of the next steps is really delving deeper into conversations with staff members and having that give and take, whether it's through a World Cafe or through a Fishbowl Discussion, and really having that conversations as we work together again, going back to that tapestry, how to weave together to really build a strong climate. Again, we'll continue with our CLR swim team. Our staff really appreciate the swim team. They, we do lots of different surveys kind of throughout the year with our professional development to see how, with our committee, how we're doing, what they want more, what they want less, and really focusing. And the number one that always comes back is they like their time practicing CLR. So we'll continue our professional development in that area.
So how activities work within our tapestry is, what we really focused on this last year is called "Become Worth Following," which is our name for our character ed curriculum. And what we've focused on is, if you see that banner there, the Tigers, and what we looked at is, the students helped us provide that and came up with it, and coaches and advisors tweaked it, and we have agreed that those are going to be the performance characteristics and the moral characteristics that we're going to be working and talking with our students throughout their experiences in activities. And we at Fridley are a why we play school. We are taught, we learn, and with the concept of why we play, which is, we ask, what's your purpose for being here as a coach and an advisor? And is it to win games and have the best of everything, which is a good goal, but it's not the purpose why we're here. We're here for students and we're here to make an impact on their life that will move on for, that'll carry with them for the rest of their lives. So our next steps would be to continue on with the Tigers. And we're starting to do that. We call it our moral and performance character playbook, and so we're working with that. And the students are also involved at creating, because they are the ones that actually push out the culture within, like Ms. Hand said, within our school, also within our teams and within their own teams, is they have such, we want them to have such an important impact with each other. And so we are actually around facilitating, but realistically, it's their team, it's their school, and they are starting to believe that. And when they see that, we're seeing the kids starting to really get more involved. We're adding juniors to this, so now we're going to have juniors and seniors that are being, having some extra character ed curriculum taught with them. And then what we're really focusing on is looking at best practices, and we've committed to what's called Huddle, which is, it's a filming concept, and where what happens is, we film, it gets put into where kids can go and look, and they get their own accounts, and they can look and they can do their own evaluation along with coach-led, but they can do it on their own. And so we feel that that's kind of becoming standard practice in the athletic high school, athletic industry. And we just want, we believe if we want to be competitive, our kids deserve to be doing what the top teams are doing as well. So that's something we're really focusing on this next year. And so Avid, Avid now, it's been, we've had seven sections of Avid this past year that, in our second group, that has gone through as a full cohort with graduation. And as you see up there, we have our signing day. And what we look for on our signing day is, we wait until into May, when a lot of our kids have been accepted into college, and we celebrate those who have signed a commitment paper to play a college sport at any level. So Division I, Division II, Division III, and a community college. And this last year, we had twelve. And just to look back, this is my twelfth year here, our first year, we didn't, we didn't have anybody. And I think that Avid has had a really important effect on our students and our culture within our school, that secondary, post-secondary education is a possibility and it's a reality for everybody, and it's open access. And I think we're starting to see that the kids actually have a belief, and I think that that comes a lot from the Avid. We are, we, Avid and our ninth grade have worked together at transition, and we have now put, everybody got planners, not just Avid kids, and we are using strategies throughout ninth grade and 10th grade classes, not just in the Avid classroom. And our next steps, Kelly?
All right. So just to continue the work with our ninth grade students as they transition to the high school, really looking at meeting with a lot of ninth grade teachers and support staff to really help these students and really utilize the Avid strategies, because we know they work. So all ninth graders next year will have planners that we build, they're specific to our school, for our students. And then we also have binders that they use in the eighth grade and then continue to use those in ninth grade, to build those important organizational strategies and those Avid strategies that they will need to be successful in high school.
Reflections. So Kelly, Dan, and I spent some time reflecting on the year. Actually, we've spent a lot of time this summer, and it's been really, really fun to have the opportunity to do that. And we noticed when we were writing down what we were proud of and our next steps, they're really the same thing. Again, I keep going back to, we're really grounded in what we believe and how we want to support students and help them find success, and then we just keep taking the next steps in our journey and how it all weaves together. So we're really proud of the work that we've really focused on, our students and our staff climate and our culture. And we've really, "I belong" has been very successful. We'll continue to delve into that, working with CLR, working with Tigers United. Again, it all weaves together. We're really excited, as we've had lots and lots of discussions, and we're taking the next steps with really being very, very clear and really direct about different pathways of students and different opportunities, and being more and more and more and more clear. And so that, that's something that we're proud of and that we will continue really focusing on, whether it's through our IB, through our DEP, through the career and tech educational pathway, whichever pathway, just being real clear about that, and we'll continue to delve into those, so students have those opportunities. And then really working on communications with families. We've really focused on our newsletter this past school year, really making sure that the information is timely and efficient, and really working on that. We've done a lot with our websites, making sure that all of our staff have websites up and running, so it's just kind of a consistent, if you go to our website, really focusing on connecting with families for positive and for when there's a concern, whether it's academic or behavioral, but for positive as well, and then offering more opportunities for parent guardian meetings. And again, our next steps, they're the same thing. Our college and career opportunities are next steps. We're looking also at how are we concreting some more concurrent enrollment opportunities? We have some within our building, we're going to create some more, working on those next steps, working specifically with Anoka Ramsey this upcoming year. And again, our career and tech educational pathways, really that partnership. We have lots of different business owners in the community now working with us, which is wonderful, and that connection within our community is so exciting. That's one of my most favorite groups, I say that over and over to work with, but I'm so psyched up about that group. And then again, continuing to find ways to engage with our community through, whether it's surveys, through meetings, through phone calls, really connecting. And then again, we'll continue to work on the communications. It's so key. I think we have all the tools that we need, we just want to make sure everybody knows about the tools and all the things that we have in our school, so that will be our next step. So again, our, what we're proud of are our next steps as well.
So, to play a little off of our communications department, "Did You Know?" I thought we'd leave you with some interesting, fun facts, that we had 15 state tournament participants in six different sports. Those would be the individuals. We had a finalist for Mr. Baseball, which is a first time for me as a 38-year educator. That is a pretty special place to put yourself. That was Evan Shaw, and he's going to be continuing on at Minnesota State Mankato. We have a Key Club International President. I think that might be a first for, I know Fridley and maybe the state of Minnesota, I'm not sure, but Emily Rice did a heck of a job there with our Key Club, and she's going on to the University of Minnesota. And for the 17th year, we achieved the Diamond Level Award from our Key Club, and that's been a tradition, and our kids are proud of that and they work hard to attain that. We have $120,000 in scholarships to our seniors throughout, from throughout our community, and we have Fridley graduates return to come and serve our school. We, at the high school, we have seven who are teachers, seven Fridley grads are teachers, five are paraprofessionals. We have 21 coaches in 15 different sports. We are extremely proud of our community, and I think it's shown, and I think you heard that in the voices of the kids in the "I belong" video. That was probably what I heard the most, at least that's what I remember the most, and I'm most proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think we have a couple other pictures from graduation. That was a lot of fun at graduation. And we've gone through this presentation very quickly, because we want to stay timely with your meeting tonight, but we are so proud of our school. So if you have any questions or ever want to come by and visit, we are happy to have you come and spend some time with us. Any questions?
I just have a comment. We're all so proud of you. And I was looking through the yearbook the other day, and they did just an outstanding job of integrating the "I belong" through the entire yearbook. And so you got to hear from a number of students in their own voice, aside from the pictures. It was really well done.
Thank you. What was really fun about that is they did not, the kids came up with the theme. They did not ask us, we didn't ask them to do it. Pretty remarkable. Very proud of them. Thank you.
Next, we'll move up, the next item, moving into our business action items, beginning with a resolution for renewal membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Dr. Hile?
Yes, this evening, we're just asking the board for the annual renewal to stay in the Minnesota High School League this evening, so.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I move to approve the resolution and stay in the Minnesota High School League.
Second.
Have a motion by Delvo, seconded by Prueado, to approve the 2019-2020 renewal of our membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Any further discussion? All right, clerk, could you call a roll?
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Perito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Thank you. Next up is a private transportation contracts for the 2019-2020 school season.
Yes, Board Chair Riddle, Board members, and Superintendent Heil. According to state statute, as a school district, we're required to transport students attending non-public schools to either the district boundary or non-public schools within the school district. So for us here in Fridley, we're required to transport our students, if they request, to our four non-public schools. And then if, and then that transportation is scheduled through our normal transportation department. But if we have resident families that want to attend outside the Fridley School District, they can request a contract through the district. And then for this year, MDE has set an annual maximum dollar amount of $268.07 per family, per school, which we're going to get a clarification on what that means, and I'll get back. So what that is, is if a family has two students attending a non-public school outside of Fridley, and they would get that $268.07 based on whatever student attended the most number of days, and then the daily rate is based on the number of school days for that non-public school.
And that number, that $268, is actually done by MDE. It's not based on our transportation rates.
No, it's set by MDE.
Right.
And it's an annual number.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2019-2020 private transportation contract.
Motion, move.
Second.
We have a motion by Adam, seconded by Thornton, to approve the 2019-2020 private transportation contracts. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. Next up, we have a second reading and adoption of policies.
Yes, so as discussed during the last board meeting, this is a second reading on the meal charge and debt collection procedure. There's been no changes to the actual document itself, and what we're recommending is that we remove the policy and implement a procedure. And we've done this based on just having discussions with USDA, MSBA, MASAA, as well as benchmarking other nutritional programs throughout the metro area who have done this as well. So we're just kind of trying to streamline and come in line with other districts across the metro area. And then from a communication standpoint, since we're transitioning to a procedure to ensure our families and students know, we've sent this, the procedure out with our educational benefits application at the end of June. We're going to post the procedure on the school website under the nutritional area, and then as well as, we're putting a small little snippet in the student handbook, letting them know we're transitioning to this.
Now, there was really no differences between what the policy was and what the procedure is. It's just really moving it from one bucket to the other.
Correct.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to remove Policy 799 Nutritional Meal Service Charge from a policy to a procedure?
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion by Prueado, seconded by Delvo, to accept the second reading and removal of Policy 799. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. Next up is our consent agenda. This is the approval of the routine action items, including the minutes from the regular school board meeting and work session that were held on June 18th, the monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leave of absence, termination, resignations, and retirements, the renewal of the historical society lease, as well as the athletic cooperatives for 2019-2020 school year. Any, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Delvo, seconded by Adam, to approve the consent agenda as previously mentioned. Any further discussion on those items? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next up, we move on to written information, the first reading of Policy 105, their equity policy. Dr. Heil?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Riddle and School Board members. It was, it is with great pleasure this evening that I introduce the first reading of our Equity and Inclusion Policy for Fridley Public Schools, number 105. This policy has been in work since September, since we received approval from the board to begin to work on it, and this evening, our Director of Communications, Jaiobak Moore, will share more information on the policy.
Board Chair Riddle, Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil. I am deeply pleased to present this policy to you for first reading today. And I want to start off by giving commendation to our new Equity Coordinator, Ms. Suzanne Samaha, who through her leadership and guidance, has worked tremendously hard in the short time that she has been with us to be able to produce this document that we are presenting to you today for first reading. So as Dr. Heil mentioned, our school, our school board has, in the past, during its board retreat, had conversations about equity, and how do we make sure that all our students, depending on what special services that they receive, receive equity and make sure that they are continuing to achieve at high levels. And in the past three years, we have had conversations that have really guided the administration and staff in terms of providing support services for our students. And in the past five years, we have added additional supports for students, including our social workers, we have looked at teacher trainings, we have looked at culturally responsive teaching and... teaching and learning, restorative circles, just trying to figure out where our students are and what support levels they need, and making sure that that's a priority in order for all of them to receive the resources and support that they need. Last year, at the beginning of the school year, when the school board met for its retreat, one of the things that the members of the board articulated was that for this to become really systemic, and for all our buildings to be able to be on the same page in terms of this work, we really needed to create an equity plan. And in order to do that, we needed to develop an equity policy. So we were very blessed to be able to hire a highly qualified professional who came on board, hit the ground running, and really through her leadership and guidance, has produced this document today. So from the board retreat last year, the district held an equity consensus workshop that really involved a broad range of stakeholders, community members, students, staff, parents, administrators, we're all on the same, were at the same table, having conversations about how do we make sure that Fridley Public Schools is the best place to learn for students. And community members, including the city of Fridley, was represented at this conversation, and it was very student-centered. Our students were there, they talked about their experiences, about the changes that they would like to see, and were really full partners in making sure that their voices were being heard, the voices of their parents were being represented, and staff were there to listen and to learn from them. And out of that consensus workshop, the group that met in January created five agreements that guided the work of the policy being presented here today. And those policies included actively creating a safe space to engage in the equity journey for all members of our school community, being able to value and hear all voices, being able to define equity, and determining where we are and where we want to be in that journey, and prioritizing, and prioritizing the representation of the student body in all aspects of the organization. Following that, Ms. Samaha had monthly meetings with a focus group that included staff members and students, as they developed the five priorities and focused on how do we define equity. And so everyone came to an understanding, hearing student voices, staff voices, and community members, on how do we define the equity that we need to work on in Fridley to make sure that educational equity is prioritized and resources are allocated and aligned to support that work. And we came up with a statement that is now going to be included in all our equity policies. The Equity and Inclusion Policy was very mindful to include those two things. We didn't, the committee was very clear on not just making it equity, but also making sure that voices that have always been historically marginalized were also included. So inclusion was also very important in creating this document. In the discussion in the workshop, we have talked about some minor changes and edits that we need to make, but having the understanding that this is groundbreaking work, many school districts do not have an equity policy. It is tremendous work that has been done, and kudos to the people who have volunteered their time and efforts to be able to participate in creating this document. We feel extremely proud of this work, because it's going to provide the guidelines and the procedures that are across the board and throughout the district, people will be able to use to explain the why. When we prioritize hiring, when we prioritize allocation of funding for student engagement and parent engagement and community engagement, and when we prioritize strategies for curriculum and instruction. This becomes the reason why. And what is invaluable about this document, it wasn't just staff members who came to the table to talk about this, but it also involves a component also for families and for community engagement, being mindful that our school district serves children from toddlers all the way to seniors. How do we make sure that every member of our community is included and their voices and their presence is heard and valued? So this is the document that is being presented to you today. And we are grateful that the school board has prioritized this work and has given the charge to the superintendent. And we are grateful that we have an equity department that has been able to take this on within a very short period of time and done tremendous work to develop this. The next steps will be to make those corrections, present this document back for a second reading, and knowing that in the conversations that I have been privileged to be involved with, with Ms. Samaha, is that there is an equity plan that is being developed, and that will be presented to our community later on. We also want to acknowledge that our community supported us through this process, and we will be communicating a follow-up as to where we are in terms of the progress of this work.
Thank you for all the good work and the whole team. It just amazes me that, you know, we're Fridley, and we're loud and proud, and we're one of the first to have this type of equity policy out there, so.
That's correct. Fridley proud, and I would like to first again, thanks to the school board for allowing us to work on this, and all of our community members. We've had so many staff and community members and families from different areas who voice are included in this policy. So I just truly thank you, and it means so much to me personally that we have this done. So thank you, board, for giving us that direction.
Thank you. Next up, we move on to reports from school board members. Northwest Suburban Integration School District's Joint Power Board Meeting was held on June 19th. As the representative on that board, generally, our June meeting is very much about reflection, looking back on the year for Northwest and all of its programming. Want to say it was fairly, a very successful year mostly for us. We did see in a lot of the student participation on this, in the programming, this would be things like Avid, the educators' rioting, Step Up programs, Essence programs, all of that touches students, the inter-district programs, this college tours, and also a tour to 3M with career readiness programs. Their participation was up 25 to 30% across the board. So they were touching more and more students' lives for everything in there. It was very great to hear all of the individual programming that they do. They come in and give us a reflection on what they saw good and bad that happened over the course of the year. One of those things that was maybe not as quite, the way we had envisioned it originally when we started the year, was the inclusion of St. Francis, the St. Francis School District petition to join Northwest. But really, we needed to take a step back. There was a lot of things going on, both with how Northwest works and with the way St. Francis works as a district, that were maybe not going to be advantageous for the collaborative and certainly for St. Francis. So we actually took a step back and took St. Francis out of the consortium and asked them to wait. They have a new superintendent in that district, so we're having some discussions with the new superintendent about their request for inclusion with the Northwest Suburban. So we'll be guiding them along over the next year and determining whether or not it is really a good fit for St. Francis to join the collaborative. The big thing, obviously, that also occurred for Northwest was it was our first year for the magnet school grant. This was a grant that we've been applying for, for the past several years. We were lucky enough to win it again, we were brought back in. And what that means for Fridley was, it was our magnet school of the pre-K program. So there's some additional funds that were allowing us to work on that pre-K program and bring that up to speed for us. So that was really the main components of the June meeting.
Chair, Chair Riddle, I have just a quick question. Is there any cap on the number of districts that can become part of the collaborative?
There's not a cap specifically. How you actually would become part of the consortium, you do have to either be a school that is, either has a racially isolated district or racially isolated school in it, or be an adjoining to one district that has either of those. How St. Francis would be added to that is, the Anoka-Hennepin School District now has some racially isolated schools within their district, because that was a new designation that allowed St. Francis to be brought into that. Currently, right now, we have seven groups in there. There's Rockford, Buffalo Hanover, Montrose, Osseo, 728, Fridley, and Anoka-Hennepin. I want to make sure if I missed one, I got them all. In the past, we've also had Mounds View, but they transitioned out a couple of years ago when they felt that they couldn't provide some of the other basic components that we look for in Northwest, so.
All right, thank you.
With that, we move on to important future school board dates. One of the things that we would want all the public to be aware of, we do have three seats up for the election here in November. And the candidate filing for those school board positions begins on July 30th through August 13th. That has to take place at the Anoka County Courthouse Government Center at 2103rd Avenue in Anoka. That's the only place you can file for that, for running for those seats. So if you're interested in becoming a candidate, I would certainly recommend you talk to any one of us on the board or Dr. Heil, and be aware that candidate filing period is from the July 30th to August 13th for that, for that position. The next Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting will be held August 7th at 6:00 PM at the Bel Air School. The next AMSD Board Meeting, August 9th at 7:00 AM at the Cora Education Center. And finally, our next Fridley Public School Board Meeting will be August 20th, with the work session beginning at 5:30, open forum at 7:00 PM, and our business meeting at 7:30. All of that taking place here at the Fridley Community Center. With that, unless anyone has anything else they would like to mention for the evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second?
I have a motion by Delvo, seconded by Thornton, to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we adjourned at 8:12.